Morning, Mr. Clark.
Morning. Pro Tim, how are you?
I'm good. Dr. Quinn, I see your face too. Good morning.
Hey, Dr. Quinn looking mighty sharp.
I know! All dressed up!
Hey, what's going on?
Hey, hey, as long as you can see above my waist.
Hey, Kansas Smithersman, how are you?
Hey, I'm good. How about you?
Hey, good morning. Hey, y'all, watch out now, watch out now. Hey, good morning. Clark, do I hit start video or?
Yeah, hit start video.
Good morning, everyone.
Okay.
Good morning.
Start video, I don't need to do that.
This is allowed, it's just allowed.
Good morning, guys, everybody.
Hey, good morning, everybody. All right.
Good morning.
Yeah, we're ready to start. Okay. Good morning, how y'all doing? Y'all doing all right? Good, good. Happy Tuesday. Okay, great. Usually doesn't look like this. Hey, good morning, everyone. All right. Want to welcome everybody here to the regular scheduled meeting of the Birmingham City Council, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we're gonna have, uh, our prayer by Counselor Hilliard and Counselor Abbott will do our pledge of allegiance. Uh, everyone could please stand.
Absolutely. Can we bow our heads? Thank you for doing for gracious Father. Father, telling us to assemble here to do thy work, Father God. Watch after each and every one of us, our citizens of Birmingham and the citizens of the United States of America, Father God. Father God, we ask you to touch, but we can continue to carry out. This we ask in Jesus' name. Let's all say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, living justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clark, I see you soon.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Member Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Present.
Councilmember Smithersman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Pro Tim Alexander.
Good morning, President.
President Parker.
Uh, good morning. And I know Counselor Abbott is here. Uh, Mr. Mr. Fraser.
I was having trouble with my listening.
I got it. Okay, all right, good, okay. Uh, the minutes are not ready for January fourteenth through, twenty twenty through January twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Um, so we'll get those done at later date. Good morning, Chief.
Hey, good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, Madam Pro Tim. So all the members of the council, our citizens and all those who are listening or watching. There's no mayor's report this morning. We hope everyone has a blessed day.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we're gonna go to the consent agenda, Mr. Clark.
Okay, uh, there were no nominations for board agencies. The consent agenda starts on page number two with items one, two, three, and four. On page three, we have items five, six, and seven on consent. Page four, we have items eight, nine, ten, and eleven on consent. And on page five, we have items twelve and thirteen on consent. And please note that these items are essential operation items that the city is taking up under the governor's proclamation.
Okay, all righty, um. Any questions, comments? We're ready to move with the consent agenda?
Yes. Um, I like one, two, three, and four, and five, and six.
Okay, repeat because I can't.
One, two, three, four, five.
Okay, all right. You said six as well.
Yeah, yes, and, um, twelve.
Okay, all righty. Mr. Clark, do you need to go back?
I think I, I got it. Move one, two, three, four, five, six, and twelve.
Okay, all right, um. All items designated as consent or routine and non-contribution will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, citizen interested in public hearings or requests. If so, such item, item is normal place on the order of business. All matters of current operation will be read, all automatically announced by reading the item number only. Our public hearings will be announced. Is there a motion?
Okay, I have old Councilmember O'Quinn and Pro Tim Alexander.
Yes, yes.
All right, uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithersman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Remember Woods?
Yes.
Council Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes, I see Counselor Hilliard, so I think he just haven't.
Said aye.
Okay.
All right, let me go back and put you in.
I know that ringtone.
All right.
Is that a new council member?
Easy with the drugs, Hoyt. He just took everything off consent.
But he has, he has a great hat on.
Can't see him.
He don't like that one.
It's the World Games.
All right, you all, it's ready, ready to vote, Mr. Clark? We're ready. Mr. Clark.
Can you hear me?
We can now.
Okay, I did the roll call. You can declare the vote.
Okay, all right, the, uh, consent agenda passes. Okay, first item.
Okay. Item one, in order to further amend the neighborhood revitalization fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one by appropriating four thousand dollars to demolition contracts, funding sources, donations received. Uh, motion, please.
Move the item.
Second. Second.
Have Counselor Williams and Counselor Hill. Item is before you.
Counselor Hoyt.
Yeah, I was just trying to see what, what donation did we receive? And for what purpose, other than, um, demolition and what do we, um, demo on?
Mr. President.
Okay, the cameras changing. Yes, sir, go ahead, I'm, the camera changing.
Counselor Hoyt, this is donation that we received from a public, um, and they wanted the funds to go into the neighborhood revitalization fund. And those funds will go into that same pot that we use for demolition and will still be part of the whole demolition list for this fiscal year.
And what organization did that?
Uh, Counselor, it's in your packet. They want it to remain anonymous.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not able to pull up all of this. Uh, I'm trying to operate on my, uh, my phone here, so.
All right, were you able to pull it up, Counselor Hoyt? The attachments?
Uh, no.
I have attachments to answer, so. So you want to know who, who was the, who was the donor?
Right. And we'll make sure there wasn't no mafia.
Okay, does someone have the packet in front of them? Just show anybody.
So we're not able to show the, um, the agenda on this, uh, platform? They.
We're, we're able to. I, I think you have the agenda that was emailed to you, um.
Yeah. And we've always had the agenda emailed too, but we also had it on our screen as well. The attachments.
Okay, you, all that would have been in the email that went out on Friday. This is our first, this is our third week in a virtual. So I think all that's, I think all that's, um, if you, if you see your.
Well, if, if you, if somebody presents an item, uh, Mr. President, they still need to know who donated. I mean, I'm almost sure they know who donated.
Mr. Mitch, do you have any additional information you want to share with us?
Um, I can share it with the counselor. We would, we attached receipt in the packet and, like I said, the, the individual under remain anonymous. But the transparency, we did put it in the council packet with the receipt with the person's name on it.
Okay. Was that the all item to that? Okay, can we get the information to Counselor Hoyt, please? Counselor, you good? They provide you that information?
Well, I'm, I don't understand how we can have folks make donations if we not know who they are.
Okay.
I mean, I mean transparency should be at, at all time high. And particularly when we, uh, on this platform that doesn't really provide any information unless it's meeting and voting.
All right, so here's where we are. We're Mitchell, is there any additional information that could be provided?
I just sent it to the counselor.
There's a city attorney on here.
I'm on Counselor Hoyt.
Okay, I can't see her, but go ahead.
So, so what, what does the law say about, uh, folks, uh, contributing and, and remaining anonymous? I, I don't know how we do that as a public entity.
I, and we're on item two?
No, item one.
Item one.
It seems like this was unhandled before this was put on the agenda, am I correct?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just asking you a question, uh, a general question about how does somebody privately donate to the city and we not know who they are? What does the law say about that?
I can find out and give you an answer shortly. One moment, please.
Okay.
All right, do we want to table this item and we move through the others and come back?
Counselor Parker, I'm, I move that we table this item and continue with the rest of the agenda until we can get clarification from the city attorney.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All righty.
Okay, we're going to item two.
Yes, sir.
All right. Item two, in order to further amend the donation fund budget for the fiscal year ending two thousand and twenty-one by appropriating two thousand and five hundred dollars to Norwood Neighborhood Association for General Use Funding Sources. Donation fee from Jefferson County Community Service Fund, motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, I have Counselor Williams and Abbott.
Right. Counselor Hoyt, you're good with this one?
Yeah, well, I was trying to see, um, so we have a Jefferson County Community Service Fund?
No, the county has that, we don't have it, but county has entity set up, uh, their community service fund, more like what our.
How, how do we, how would, how do we access this?
I think that would be a question of communicating with, with Jefferson County, uh, to find out what their.
This is in your, this is in your district, is it?
I, I understand that, but it's coming from the Jefferson County, uh, Community Service Fund.
It's like they're discretionary, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm saying, but, or it's, yeah, it's coming through one of the, the county.
Commissioner, yeah.
Commissioners, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm just inquiring. I've never seen that before. Okay.
All righty. We're ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithersman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Clark.
The item three, in order to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one by appropriating three thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents to equipment management vehicles. Funding source is miscellaneous revenue, damage to city property, motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Williams and Alex, I mean, um, Abbott, I'm sorry. Item is before you.
Counselor Hoyt, you ready to vote or?
Yeah, we fine.
Okay, all right, you're good, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithersman.
Yes.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Counselor Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes, okay, all right, that item passes. Next item, Clark.
Item four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with Mr. Jeff Miller doing business at Miller Development Group LLC as a consultant, consultant to provide sports tourism development services and legislative services to the city council that will also assist growth for the city and its constituents. The fee for this, for these services shall be in amount up to forty-five thousand dollars inclusive of any reimbursable expenses. The project will begin February the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one and conclude no later than April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Williams, Abbott.
All right, we're ready for a vote.
No, I've took it off consent.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I can't see you.
What, what are they doing, uh, counsel? I mean, what projects do they have that they're working on? Because these folk have been with the city, was, I don't even, I wouldn't know Jeff Miller if he walked in the room.
Well, you saw them last week on our meeting.
He hasn't, he hasn't, he hasn't sit down. Uh, maybe he's sitting down with some other counsel, but he hadn't sit down with me to discuss this and, um, and then I don't, I don't know what the plan, what is the plan for that? And, and what are we recruiting?
I saw it's a couple of different things. One, we're working on some, uh, uh, CARES Act funding as relates to tourism dollars, trying to recap dollars. As you know, the, uh, the, the CARES Act funding was extended through December of twenty twenty-one. Uh, and so there's additional dollars that are in play. Uh, there's fifteen billion dollars available for sports, uh, entertainment. That's in the last CARES Act funding. We're trying to, 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 uh, poop some of our money, uh, for some of the, the, uh, city venues that, uh, that, uh, you know, we, because we didn't have events last year. Uh, that money's gonna come through the states and so we're, we're trying to be very proactive. Uh, also, uh, Jeff was a part of the, Mr. Miller's a part of our meeting last weekend. You were a part of that as well, our meeting with the legislative delegation and.
And I, I didn't know what that meeting was really all about, because I don't think we accomplished anything.
Well, let's say, well, Counselor, let me respond to that as well when you finish. I can't see you, so I, I can't, it's delayed.
Oh, it's delayed if I can't see.
No, no, I'm saying, no, when you're talking, I'm hearing a delayed feedback and I'm in the change, so I'm hearing a delayed reaction, that's all I'm saying. Counselor Hoyt?
Yes, I'm, I'm listening.
Okay. As relates to last week, we received a briefing from Dr. Harris who gave us an update on COVID nineteen uh, relating to where we are with the vaccinations, where we are with the number of individuals being tested. Uh, I think anytime you can get the health, state health director, uh, to give us a briefing along with our legislative delegation.
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I thought, um, that we were gonna meet with these, uh, legislators to talk about legislative agendas.
And, and what I'm saying to Counselor Hoyt is COVID nineteen is the legislative agenda. We just had, uh, nine hundred billion dollars passed through Congress that's coming through the states, which those are things that can, that can assist us, uh, with funding components for the city of Birmingham, so, um, having the delegation with the state health officer, um, COVID nineteen is gonna be, I think, the legislative agenda, um, in Montgomery, uh, for the, I think this year's gonna dominate, whether it's, uh, testing or if it's additional funding dollars. Uh, and then I, I know that the president-elect is coming with a two trillion dollar package and that money's gotta come through the state, so I think we're able to, uh, communicate with our delegation along with our state health officer. Um, I think the agenda for this year for the session, I'm not speaking for them, is gonna really be COVID nineteen.
Yeah, well, Mr. President, I, you know, uh, you got all my phone numbers and all, and I don't know if you talk to other counselors, but, um, I'm just not accustomed to voting for stuff that nobody's discussed anything with me and you hadn't discussed any of this with me. I mean, that's your job as president of this council. And I, you know, I, I don't want to be denied that opportunity because I would have to pull it off the agenda if there's a discussion. I mean, that's what the president does. Unless you just meet with folks to get your five and then that's, that's it, you don't worry about anybody else on the council. But I want to be talked to.
Counselor, you finished? I just want to make sure I'm not interrupting, that's all. Listen, we'll talk to everybody. We'll, we'll have ongoing conversations as relates to.
Did you talk to me about this? I don't think so.
Okay, please, sir. But I thought it was pretty obvious, uh.
It's not obvious because obviously you got, you got a concept that, um, that everybody doesn't know, I guess, and I guess, I don't know. I'm just speaking for me. I can't say what the other colleagues, uh, uh, know or don't know. But I'm just saying from my perspective. You know, and if you want me to support something, you, you talk to me. I think that's how that works.
Yes, sir. We're gonna have some ongoing conversations if you don't mind, sir. If you and I can have some ongoing conversations. Can we, can we meet in the middle?
Um. I just wish I had, would have known about all of this before now. Because obviously you know what you want to do. I just don't know what you want to do. Has he talked to any of the colleagues? Have y'all had conversation about this item? Is that a no or a yes?
Okay. Counselor Hoyt, we, you and I would have conversations forward. If that's one of our homework, if that's, if that's okay with you, sir.
Well, I mean, it's, it's fine. I think you got your votes this morning and you count them.
I'd like it to be, sir.
Well, I, I can't, you know, I don't, you, you know me, I've been serving with you a long time.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I, I'm not gonna support anything that I'm not informed about. And you know that, you know that about me. And all it takes is a phone call. And I think it's disrespectful.
Counselor, please accept my apology and we will make sure we have communications on this item, sir, as we move forward.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I just want to say, no, I have not had a personal conversation with the council president. But if we don't have a lobbyist in Montgomery, the mayor has one. He's supposed to be for both of us, but obviously if we have a different opinion from the mayor, then we have no lobbyists. So I believe that it's important to have someone and Mr. Miller has done the job for us before. And, uh, and I'm, I'm in favor of having someone because having no one is a really bad idea. Now, you know, I think this sports part of it is a little bit weak, but we know coronavirus is the number one topic, you know? And if we can get some of that funding, by golly, we need to be in their pitching. So, yeah, I don't know everything, every conversation that's been had with Mr. Miller personally, but I know enough to know that we need help. This council needs help and we need our own help because the city's help is not ours. They don't report to us, they don't answer to us, they don't do what we want. And we haven't even had the conversation yet with the mayor about our agenda. He has an agenda and we have an agenda and the two agendas have not been melded together. Um, so, you know, that's the reason I'm voting for this. It's not because of any secret conversations with anybody. Um, so, you know, that's the reason I'm voting for this. It's not because of any secret conversations with anybody. It's because I know that if we don't have somebody, we're just hamstrung. And I'm not in favor of being hamstrung. So that's it. No secret conversations.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, let me tell you, uh, even though uh, I believe and I believe since the day I've been here and I think all of you can attest that I, I've always pushed that we're on representation. It is without a shadow of a doubt that we should ever enter any legislative season without being represented. So I'm in a hundred percent favor of it. I have been and even though we have a, had a long conversation about it, you, you've known my stance from the very beginning. We should be represented. So I, I am in favor.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Okay, um.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, and I've not suggested that we shouldn't have a lobbyist. I'm just saying this item here speaks to tourism, sports, development service. There says nothing about COVID at all.
Um, and it's.
And I, and I, and I think all contracts are specific.
And it says, and legislative services. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the funding is going to come in various categories and it's where you saw the catch-all phrase, and legislative services. So it's, it's centered around that fifteen billion dollar pot of money that we're trying to receive, but also any other type of catch-all as relates to COVID nineteen. But that's going to be the, that's going to be dominate the session is going to be COVID nineteen, whether, you know, several different components of it, whether it's more testing, whether it's re- trying to receive uh, reimbursements, um, you know, in various categories. And I think this package is going to be coming up, uh, this, that the president-elect Biden has proposed two trillion dollars. Uh, we'll have a multiple packages, multiple components and multiple opportunities for the city to receive additional funding.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, um, I, I, you know, I understand others' opinion. I have mine and um, and I want to be informed. And and whether somebody else want to just, you know, not want to be informed, that's fine. But that's not, that's not where I work from. And I hadn't changed. And, you know, been there only about fifteen years now and uh, and nothing changed about me from that perspective. And I just think it's a courtesy. You know, if, if there's a, um, you know, if there's a, um, a vision or, or a direction that we have, I think that needs to be shared by all council and not just assumed. That it, that's not how we lead. And uh, I think you got your votes on it, but I'm, you know, I'm just not, you know, people got to talk to me. And that's just the way I am. I'm wired that way.
Yes, sir. I understand. And we will be, you and I will have ongoing conversations, sir. Please accept my apology.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing that I didn't see in the packet was the actual agreement. I don't know whether my packet, you know, like had an accident or something, but I didn't see.
I think it was emailed to you, um, I think either last night or this morning, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and we need to be more timely than that. You know, it needs to be in our packet if it's going to be on our agenda. You know, that's just kind of a no-brainer. To leave it out of the packet means it should not even come to the agenda if we're so ill-prepared that we can't get it in the packet for people to read over the weekend.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, all right. Mr. Clark?
Council, uh, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
No.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
President Parker?
Hi, okay. Thank you. All right, thank you. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with Mr. Andrew P. Campbell doing business at Campbell Partners LLC as a consultant to provide government affairs, legal, research, tourism, development services to the city council that will also assist with growth for the city and its constituents. The fee for these services shall be an amount of forty-five thousand dollars inclusive of any reimbursable expenses. The project will begin January twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one and conclude no later than April the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
I have Councilwoman Pro Tem Alexander. Item is before you.
Um. You ready to vote? For Hoyt, is it? Counselor.
Well, and I have, I have the same question here. You know, um, and so um, maybe Counselor Williams could tell me what's, what's going on here?
Yeah, Mr. Hoyt, uh, Yowana McDonald, who has been working with us and who has sent us all emails and who we can reach out to if we need to have anything written um, as far as uh, or, or researched, as far as ordinances. Um, it, it's the same lady that's a partner at that firm that's going to be working with us. She has helped, I know, um, with a lot of ordinances that we've passed, like the tethering ordinance out of public safety and things like that. So she's an excellent resource if we need something researched uh, and written uh, in terms of ordinance.
So you're the only one who's uh, accessed her?
Nope, uh, I know that she has reached out to every single council member, um.
She hadn't reached out to me.
Uh, well, actually, I was on some of the emails where she has, um, whether you're responsive or not is up to you.
I don't even know her, so.
She has reached out to all nine members, um, and everyone is welcome to reach out to her. I'm happy to, to re-introduce you to Yowana.
Well, she needs to call me and set up appointment.
And, and I am happy to help facilitate that.
And, and, and I guess, what, what is the agenda? Do you have an agenda for her?
It's, so I'm, I'm going to have her work on um, what each counselor needs out of their committee. So if you have something out of transportation that you need in terms of either a new ordinance or you have something that you need researched about why an ordinance is written the way it is and you want to see it improved or changed in some way, um, it's going to be up to each committee to submit that to uh, Yowana or Ms. McDonald, excuse me, um, so that, so that each committee can have her services, because I don't want one counselor to have more access than the others. I think that Counselor Quinn has used her in this past uh, engagement and I think Counsel Smithman has as well, um, just from me being in those committees. But I'm not, I'm sure that other people have as well.
Well, I would want to do, uh, debriefing on um, what she's able to do, because I'm, I'm, I'm not aware of that. And um, and forty-five thousand dollars, a lot of money to, for somebody to do some research.
All right.
And no, and no conversation about it. So, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. President, so if um, if I bring some, someone.
He has stepped out for a second.
Help me, huh?
President Parker stepped out.
Thank you, Cody. Mr. Hoyt, Mr. President has stepped out, so if you want to address and continue. Mr. Hoyt, go ahead. Mr. Parker left that.
Well, um, Madam, uh, Pro Tem, um, I'm just, I'm just saying, so the councils individually can bring um, these line items like this and um, and get assistance and we vote on it?
No, no, Mr. Hoyt, this is, this is the same um, attorney that has represented us in the past. And the reason that I put it on there is because I, I think that we collectively, the nine of us, need that representation, need that attorney that is able to research things, that, that is able to write legislation for us. Um, and that uh, is able to, when, I know several things have come up in the past where we've had questions about things and, and different committee chairs have submitted it to her for research. Um, most notably, the um, when the council had a question on whether we were allowed to drive the automobiles or not under the Mayor Council Act, she's the attorney that did all the research that submitted it. And then, and then there was a, uh, um, a decision made by the, by the, by the administration after that. But it's things like that. I think that, you know, we want to make sure that um, that we have, and then she, she put together the, the de minimis use policy to make sure that we were in compliance with the state ethics law, um, the nine of us and, and things like that. So I, it's, it's not something that, it's just something that I think that, that we need to have to make sure that we um, are doing what we are supposed to be doing collectively. And it's nice to have someone specifically looking out for the council, um, and writing and researching for the council. Um, because while the law department does a great job, I think that sometimes it's not council-focused.
So let me ask you, uh, counselor, so um, we saying that we're going to spend forty-five thousand dollars, up to forty-five thousand dollars for somebody to be on retainer?
Up to.
Forty-five thousand is what it says.
That's the cap. Yeah, it says up to.
And she's worked on two, two or three orders, ordinances and, and I don't know, that's, that seems such high.
She's done a great, she's done a lot of work. Anyone's welcome to step in. She's used her. I don't, I don't have to be the only one, but.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, you know, I, obviously, I'm not saying it's not anything that we don't need. But, you know, when people get contracts like that, I think they need to approach the council. You know, and it has to be more than just an email. That's not how you just, that is not how you do business.
And she.
You know it because you talk to it. Obviously, Counselor um, O'Quinn knows that he said you, he's you, he's used to. Whoever this person is, I don't even know who the person is.
All right, no.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hoyt. If we've answered all of your questions, I believe we're ready for the vote. Mr. Clark? Comments from other counselors? Mr. Clark, can you go ahead with the vote?
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill, you?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
No.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Is Counselor, is he still out?
Yes, sir.
Counsel, President Alexander?
Aye.
And Counsel, Parker, out. Okay, that vote is unanimous. It's seven one. Counselor.
All right, thank you. That motion on number, item number five, carries. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Should be item number six, a resolution pursuant to the provisions of Code Section two dash three dash two, twenty-seven of the General Code of the City of Birmingham is amended, authorizing the city attorney upon recommendation to settle all claims against the city arising from an incident occurring on April the twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, wherein the claimant allegedly suffered a fall while performing her duties as an employee of the City of Birmingham. And authorize the mayor, the city attorney, or any one of her assistants to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the settlement of this claim in an amount not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. The said funds to come from account number one, forty-two, twenty-three hundred, uh, five-two-seven dash forty-five. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay. I agree with you.
Madam President?
Head of item is for us, it's been moved and properly second. Any questions? Mr. Hoyt?
Yes, um, so, so where did this incident take place?
Do we have anyone from the city attorney or the mayor's office who can answer this question? Not sure. King is.
I am on President Pro Tem.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. King.
And so this was related to an on-the-job injury and it was related to a workers' comp claim.
Mr. President's back, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. President. We're in discussion on the item.
Okay, all righty.
Anything further, we would have to go into executive session, but that is what we can disclose at this time.
Ca- Counselor, you were trying to say, so I, I saw your lips move, but I didn't see.
Somebody keep, keep uh, muting. I think I can mute. I'm not handicapped and, and, and when I'm not speaking. So uh, if y'all could just not try to control that. So I'm asking that we go into executive session and, and get uh, briefing on this uh, this claim.
So it is under Alabama State Code thirty-six, twenty-five, eighty-seven, that I'm going to go to. It's my recommendation that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Ho- hold on, before we go in that, how do we, how would we go into executive session be, and I, I'm just asking. I don't know.
You'd have to drop the meeting and have another link for group meeting separate without the council and the public being involved? There's not possible during this meeting that we already running to do that.
So do we need to recess or?
I don't know how you keep the same links. Uh, Kim can answer that point. I don't know how you.
All right, Counselor Hoyt, is it, is there, is, can the city attorney um, meet with you about this matter? Or is it something? If not, is this sensitive where we could lay it a week or is it just time-sensitive, Adam?
Yeah, well, I, you know, I, personally, I don't know how we um, transact this city's business if we're not able to uh, to go into executive session outside of what we doing now. And obviously, this platform doesn't, when it works for uh, for the council.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
You know, because if you on Zoom, you could probably, you can go in the chat room and.
Why can't we go into a conference call mode, uh, get a line out for a conference call just with the members of council?
That's what we're working on right now. It's one that, that's where, we're in the process now of setting that up uh, with uh, Mr. Cody and, and uh, Kim and also, um.
So does this, this, so this platform doesn't have the, the capabilities of doing that, going into a chat room?
Um, Mr. President, if I may please, this is Cheryl Keating.
Yes, ma'am. I, I, yes, ma'am.
We are continuously working with IMS uh, to create that. We had thought through that and was just hoping that before the software was, uh, that the software is being upgraded. So we have thought through that and we have a room that they are going to develop for us. Right now, it isn't. We didn't want to test it today, but we will be talking with IMS later today to create that for just that purpose.
Well, can we table this item till we get that briefing?
Okay, here, here's where we are. Um, Attorney King, City Attorney King, is this matter, is it, is it a time-sensitive this week? Uh, if not, we can ask if you, Moma, we can go and set up the conference line, uh.
It, it is time-sensitive and, and that it is pursuant to a court order.
It, it is time-sensitive in, in that it is pursuant to a court order.
Okay, all righty. So Mr. Clerk, we need this recess and then, uh, we just recess this meeting and, uh, and then we move forward on the conference line.
All right, if they provide the number to you, I guess, to each of the council members because, um, who's all involved in the executive sessions, I guess they would just provide that number to them.
Okay, so should we move and go in recess in this for, uh, let the City Attorney King state the purpose of executive session? We've moved recess and then.
We take a motion on that and then I, I don't know how Kim operates the system, if it will still be running while you guys are away on the conference call or how that would work.
Okay.
We can keep the meeting running while you are on the conference call, but we might ask that the counselors and whoever's going to be on the conference call, go ahead and log out of the meeting and then, once you are out of executive session, log back in.
Okay. Phone number.
Yes, sir, if you momentarily, we just, we're just trying to make sure procedurally we're, uh, we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, we'll get her.
Mr. President, we do have another item number six. I wonder while we're waiting to set up the call, can we table this one and go to six without going into recess or how would that work on, keep the move, meeting moving while we're waiting on that or what's your pleasure?
Yeah, Counsel, that's, that's the item we own.
No, 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 here, here's what we're going to, we're going to go into executive session number six. Now there's another item, I think, number twelve. And then also, um, I think there's a, uh, urgency, uh, I thought it was, but we, we have one more. But let's go into, uh, executive session on this, this item, then come back out and finish up.
All right, thank you.
I need certification, President, in the roll call. I need the certification from the city attorney.
Okay, I'll repeat it. Under Alabama State Code thirty-six, twenty-five, eight, dash, seven, it is my recommendation that we go into executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Okay, uh, motion. Motion for executive session.
Move, move for executive session.
Second.
Yeah, I have. O'Quinn and Counsel Pro Tem, uh, Alexander.
Great.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hill.
Come back. Log out. I don't know if you want, yeah.
Okay, I'll put him after then. Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye.
Okay, so that's the call here.
Okay, all right. So you're saying, um, it was also indicated we needed to, to log out?
Yeah, if you would go ahead and just all the people who are going to be going into executive session would log out, this meeting will remain active just until you log back in.
So we press the leave event button?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Hello, we're good.
Wait, what, what number? Is somebody calling us or are we calling somebody?
Cody is going to be emailing you a conference line momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Mr. President, I just blurted that out. I'm sorry.
That's okay. In fact, uh, I think Jeff, you should have from Mr. McDaniel's. You should have an email from, uh, Mr. McDaniel's.
Right, we received an email from Mr. McDaniel's, Mr. President.
Okay.
Yeah, got, got it.
Okay. Log off.
Well, hold on, I haven't restarted like the live stream yet. I'm getting it back there. Okay.
I think everybody's back. I think we're back in.
We're not, we're not live yet.
We're not live yet. Okay, give us a moment. All right, everybody back on? Everybody hear me? Okay, we're ready to start the video back?
Yep.
Did it start? Okay, all right, we are back in. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, uh, call roll right quick, um. Councilmember, uh, Abbott.
Here, President.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smitherman.
Yo.
Councilmember William.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
President.
Councilmember Pro Tem Alexander.
President.
President Parker.
Okay.
Hill here.
Okay.
I see Counsel Smithman.
Okay, everybody's back. Okay.
Councilmember Quinn is absent, okay. All right, item is back.
Okay, all right, we're ready to vote for, um, item six, uh.
Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye, and this is, uh, the, the, the item passing just real quick. This was item six dealing with a, uh, a claim against the City of Birmingham. And we're simply, um, after executive session, we're now coming back to vote on the, on the item which is item six. Um, for them out, settlement not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. So just want to make sure it was clear on what we were voting on and, uh, go from there.
Item twelve.
Yes, sir.
Item twelve, a resolution accepting and approving the bid award of, uh, Desire BA Corporation doing business at Johnny King, Johnny King of Birmingham for janitors, one and two, price on file, purchase agent, for a period of one year guaranteed for multiple City of Birmingham departments, lowest most responsible bids submitted, meeting specifications and authorized, excuse me. If you motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
For Williams, Counsel Abbott.
Okay, Counsel Hoyt. Yeah, I'm good. Okay. All right, um, we're ready to.
Who, Member Abbott?
Aye.
For Hill.
Aye.
For Hoy.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. O'Quinn. Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Member Woods.
Yes.
President Pro Tem.
Aye.
President Parker.
Yes, okay. All right, that item passes.
Can we confirm that Councilmember Quinn is on? I, I thought I heard.
I don't know, we are checking. Was he? Hold on one second.
I don't want to put him down for a vote if I, if he's not here.
I don't think he's, uh, we're checking to see. We're, we're in the process of, let's just move on.
We lost him in the atmosphere.
That's okay, but let's just continue to move on. Dr. Quinn, well, let's just move on.
I'll have him absent on that vote, okay?
Okay, all right.
What next? Uh, we got the tabled item, item one, or we have old and new business or speakers? Well, no speakers, I'm sorry, presentation.
And there's no old and new business, so we just go back to table two, uh, number item one. Did we get the information to, um, for item one?
Yes, Dr. Mitchell sent it to me.
Okay, you're, okay.
We get a motion to the on-table item, bring the item back before.
I know that we bring the item back before us.
Second.
Hoyt.
All right. All right, item is back on the table. I already have a motion for adoption, so.
Okay, all righty, we're ready to vote. Counsel Hoyt?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Clerk, ready to vote?
Okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Member Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember Smitherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
For Woods.
Yes.
Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
You called me, Scott, yes, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. And also with, uh, Dr. Quinn, we're, we're, I think he's having some technical diff, difficulties logging back on, but, uh, but, so we'll, we'll make sure we address that. All right, is there any other items before, uh, Counsel Williams, their question?
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you, before we adjourn, I just wanted to let everyone know that the, um, time, uh, limit for subs- submitting items to budget and finance has been extended until two o'clock tomorrow afternoon, uh, just due to general problems that are being had by people in the city trying to work through COVID. So I wanted to make sure everybody knew that the, they have a two-hour extension to get their items into budget and finance.
All righty.
That is very generous of you.
I knew it. I'm jumping up and down.
For some folks, two hours is a big deal, especially if they're unprepared, so it's a good thing.
All right, thank you. Counsel Whitman, yes, sir.
Um, when can we talk about, um, our discretion now?
Uh, we can talk about it. Uh, I'll give you a call. You tell me what time I can call you later on today.
Okay.
Okay. Text me and let me know what time you want to talk later.
Okay, I want y'all to use up all my money.
Okay, all right.
On that note, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Godhood, I want mine.
Second.
Counsel Williams, all right, there's a motion, Mr. Clerk.
All in favor, ladies and gentlemen.
Aye.
Aye.
Y'all have a wonderful week.